Good afternoon, colleagues. We're back in session from our recess. We're now on the second reading file, Bill Number 291-36 LS. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Ms. Speaker.
I'm sorry, Senator. Could all those people in the loft kindly put your phones on mute or silence? My apologies. Please proceed.
Ms. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move Bill Number 291-36 LS as substituted on the floor into the third reading and discuss.
Please proceed. Oh, substituted on the floor? Wait.
Yes. We have a substituted version. And notwithstanding House rules.
Sorry, I'm not aware of any substitute version, so...
Notwithstanding House rules, I'd like to make a motion.
We'll take a recess to make sure any potential substitute version is uploaded and printed, maybe, because...
Thank you.
All right. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move Bill Number 291-36 LS into the third reading file and discuss.
That's the introduced version?
That's the introduced version.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill Number 291-36 LS is an act to add a new chapter, 91 Bravo, to Division Four of Title 10 of the Guam Code Annotated, relative to abortion, including abortions, after detection of an unborn child's heartbeat, authorizing a private civil right of action. Madam Speaker, Illicitoranguan finds that the contemporary medical science that was not available decades ago on the decision of Roe versus Wade demonstrates that early infants in the womb are a class of living, distinct human beings, that, among other individual human traits, have their own distinct blood types, distinct organ systems, distinct central nervous systems, unique fingerprints, unique genetic characteristics, and at approximately six weeks gestational age, detectable human heartbeats. From earliest development, unborn children need only nourishment in a safe environment to grow to full adulthood, and that a fetal heartbeat has become a key medical predictor that an unborn child will reach live birth. And so, Madam Speaker, the premise of the bill is to defend the life in the womb at the first instance of a heartbeat.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill, 291, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? If none, Bill 291? If none, then the sponsor may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't feel there's a need to close.
Senator?
I'd like to make a motion.
Amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to... Oh, there is an amendment that we do have, if the clerks passed it out already. And that amendment is on Page Six, Line Nine, where we cross out the word persecution and put prosecution of a woman on whom an abortion is performed.
On the amendment, to change the word persecution to prosecution on Line Nine of Page Six, on that amendment, Senator Taitsegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just want a copy of that, please. I don't have it, and I'm not even sure whether there is a substituted version for this? No substituted?
She proceeded with the original version.
Okay. And so, if I can get a copy of the amendment, please?
All right. The clerks will pass out copies of the amendment. This was uploaded earlier, should have been passed out. One-minute recess while they pass out copies of the amendment. All right. We're back from recess. The amendment has been passed out. On the amendment, Senator Nelson, would you like to speak again on the amendment now that it's passed out?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It is a simple amendment. The amendment is on Page Six, under subsection 91 Bravo 106, on Line Nine, and the complete sentence or the subsection reads, authorize the initiation of a cause of civil or otherwise against or the persecution of a woman on whom an abortion is performed or induced or attempted to be performed or induced in violation of this act. So what we are proposing here, Madam Speaker, is to cross out the word persecution and replace with the word prosecution. It was a typo that we overlooked when we first introduced the bill.
All right. On that amendment, it's been passed out. Is there anyone who would like to be recognized on the amendment? On the amendment? If not, the sponsor may close on the amendment. All right. She waves closure on the amendment. So on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes. Senator Nelson? All right. We've already proceeded to the sponsor to close on the bill. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to allow the other colleagues to speak on the main bill.
There's a motion to allow other colleagues to speak on the bill who haven't yet spoken. Is there any objection to that motion? Not. Motion carries. On the bill, Senator Taitsegui and Senator Duennius, Senator... Yeah. Senator Taitsegui, you are recognized.
Ms. Speaker, good afternoon to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to read something into the record, just so that anybody who's listening right now can understand the certain comments that were made earlier. And the author of this legislation provided a fact sheet, and I'd like to read that fact sheet into the record. It says here, "Any woman who obtains an abortion can be sued." That's false. Fact, a mother cannot and will not be sued for obtaining an abortion. Quote, "Any woman who has an abortion will be arrested." That's false. The fact, no mother will be arrested, as the act only allows for a civil lawsuit, not a criminal lawsuit against providers who induce or perform an abortion. Quote, "A woman, a pregnant woman, will be forced to carry pregnancy to full term, even if it negatively impacts her health or has fatal risks to herself." That's false. The fact, the act has the exception that allows a mother to obtain an abortion when a mother's health can be impaired or if her life is at risk due to the pregnancy. Quote, "There have been no abortions since 2018. Abortions are not a problem in Guam right now." False. The fact, there is confirmation that a doctor has cared for a woman who had complications from a failed abortion by another doctor here in Guam in 2021. That's a fact. Quote, "A woman will die from illegal abortion. We need to provide access to safe abortion." False. The fact, when a woman has an abortion, she is at risk of severe complications, including death. Women who've had abortions have an increased risk of suicide, infertility, pregnancy loss, and damage to internal organs. That's a fact. Quote, "Our island has one of the highest per capita rates of rape. Why is there no exception to rape or incest?" That's false. Any woman, this is a fact, any woman who has been raped has suffered horrific violence and injustice. The rapists should always be held accountable for their actions. However, abortion does not undo the violence. It brings another form of violence and adds trauma to the victim. That's a fact. The last one, quote, "This bill is unconstitutional and violates a woman's constitutional right." This is false. The United States Constitution and the Organic Act protects activities that involve government actions against one of its citizens. The Guam Heartbeat Act places the authority to resolve issues related to abortion into the hands of private citizens and totally restricts any government action against a physician or person that performs or induces an abortion. The act is constitutional because it provides no authority to the government, leaving enforcement for violations of the act in the hands of private citizens. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the author of the bill, 291-36, to provide this information. And I just wanted to make it clear to those who are listening, if they have any questions about this. So I thank you for the opportunity, and I hope that if anybody has any questions at all, either the author or any of the authors of this legislation, we're happy to take their calls, to answer any of their concerns. But let's not start rumors out there and make up stories, because I don't think we're the bad guys here. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
All right. After Senator Taitsegui, Senator Duennius, you are recognized.
Ms. Speaker, I certainly rise in full support of Bill 291-36, Guam Heartbeat Act of 2022, not only as a co-sponsor, Madam Speaker, but simply just because I believe in the sanctity of life. You know, Madam Speaker, there's been months and months of debate now over this issue, and the time has come, the righteous time has come, for this bill to have reached the floor. And as I thought about going over all the testimony and all the information that's been provided, letters that have been written, as my colleague just enumerated, misinformation and other things about this bill and what it would do, I figured I would let all of that debate rest and just make two simple points, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, God has given me 56 great years to be on this earth. With that comes the unfortunate situation of having to watch individuals that you love very much go on to meet their maker, to rest in peace, hopefully in peace. Madam Speaker, as I have watched my parents, other loved ones, close friends, lie on their deathbed, one thing has always been sure, whether they were in hospice, at the hospital under care, or whatever reason, or whatever method in terms of where they were, that they would take that last breath, and I was there to witness it. I would either see a hospice nurse or a nurse in the hospital, always ensure before any pronouncement was made, typically by putting a stethoscope on the femoral artery to ensure that there is no indication of any activity with regard to a heartbeat. Isn't it interesting, Madam Speaker, how we discuss and have discussed this issue? And I'm not even approaching this issue, Madam Speaker, today, although it is my Christian belief in life and the sanctity of life. I'm just speaking on life itself. And as science would tell us, that upon the uniting of a sperm and an egg and all the cellular activity that takes place, it's that beautiful moment when that heart starts to beat and starts to provide true life and invigorating life to that wonderful creation. Madam Speaker, there are only two things, two events, that stop that process, and that is either the intervention of man, or the intervention of God, or for those who don't believe in the Almighty, nature taking its course. Those are the only two things that stop the eventuality of a beautiful human being being born into this world. I intended to be brief, and I will be brief, and I will end with this. I call it a quote. I know that my good friend, Senator Bob Klitschke, has not put a patent on this statement, but I think it puts the exclamation, and I wanted to attribute this quote to Senator Klitschke. And the final decision also of why I knew that supporting this bill was the right thing to do. And the quote goes like this, Madam Speaker. "When is it ever right to take the life of a vulnerable, innocent human being?" And I can say with a resounding affirmative, the unequivocal answer to that question, Madam Speaker, is never. It is never right to take the life of an innocent, vulnerable, helpless human being. And with that, Madam Speaker, I pray and I ask that our colleagues will vote in the affirmative for Bill 291-36. Ms. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill... On the bill, 291, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've always stated that the issue of abortion should be decided by the electorate in a referendum, not by a small group of lawmakers, and my position hasn't changed. Despite the rhetoric these last few months, I know that every sponsor of this bill desires to do what is right, that is, to protect life, and I'll always respect that. I also respect the hundreds of people who testified on this measure, those who endorsed it, and those who opposed it. In attending the hearings and reviewing the extensive committee reports, however, I can't help but notice a discrepancy between supporters of the bill and the bill itself. Many who spoke at the hearings believe that life begins at conception, but this bill doesn't say that. Many discuss the plight of Guam's forgotten children, but this bill doesn't address that. A pro-life ethic would make prenatal care more accessible, overhaul our foster care system, bolster adoption, subsidize childcare, and eradicate homelessness, but this bill does none of that. What it does, and all it does, is it turns neighbor against neighbor in exchange for cash prizes. It's a bounty bill, as many have described. In the first known challenges to the Texas Heartbeat Act, the act on which this bill is modeled, the two plaintiffs who sued a Texas abortion clinic and provider weren't even against abortion and had no connection to the doctor that they sued. They simply wanted to test the law's legality. And just days ago, the state court responded, ruling that one of the plaintiffs didn't have standing to sue because he wasn't directly impacted by the abortion. So this puts into question the entire enforcement scheme of the Heartbeat Act. But regardless of this outcome, the overhanging threat of litigation has only discouraged health professionals from acting in accordance with clinical standards. This explains why, of the 11 medical professionals that testified on this bill, eight of them were vehemently opposed. And yet, despite undermining health professionals' expertise, the Texas Heartbeat law has not stopped abortion. Following its enactment, clinics in five neighboring states saw a nearly 800% increase in abortion patients, and to this day, the ban causes surges in out-of-state clinics. But that's not my opinion, Madam Speaker and colleagues. It's simply what the data says. For those who are unable to access these clinics, the law has increased the likelihood of self-managed procedures. The National Library of Medicine, the world's largest medical library to advance medicine and improve public health, confirms this, stating that "the prevalence of unsafe abortion remains the highest in jurisdictions which has the most restrictive abortion laws and/or policies. Making abortion legal, safe, and accessible does not appreciably increase abortion demand. It reduces clandestine and unsafe abortion procedures and results in legal and safe ones." And so, what is intended to save lives instead incentivizes spying, surveilling, and potentially stalking, in the very same session where we're trying to prevent that kind of harassment through, for example, Bill 3104. Is that really the kind of community that we want our island to have? I don't think it's a chimeral way. These are not our core values of respect to reciprocity and love, nor is it the way of Christ, the Christian way, to inspire fear in helpless mothers, to sow division between neighbors, to condemn the vulnerable from a place of privilege and power. Every one of us here believes that life matters. In my eight years at the legislature, I have always tried to produce what I hope to be life-affirming legislation. In my eight years at the legislature, I have always tried to produce what I hope to be life-affirming legislation, to improve Guam's crippled foster care system, to expand parental leave, to strengthen protections for abused children, and empower victims of sexual assault. But despite the sponsors' best intentions, the evidence demonstrates that Bill 291 is not wholly a pro-life bill. It appears to be merely a pro-lawsuit bill. And that is why I have struggled with this bill since its introduction and why I have not ever expressed support for it. There is a better way. There has to be a better way. But it'll take all of us to unify to find it, instead of creating division in our community through this measure. And I believe going back to the initial intentions when the whole abortion ban bill was passed, that included, in its fundamental sense, choice for the people of Guam. It included a referendum question, a question that asked plain and simple, that was to occur within months after the passage of that public law, a question whether the ban of abortion as enabled by that law should be repealed. That was brought directly to the people at that time. And I believe, Madam Speaker, the best way to address this is really in the true spirit of a referendum. We found it appropriate to do with supamangy, with marijuana. We saw it right to bring the question to the people with the gambling initiative several times over. But something as divisive and profound as this type of a bill, again, I believe in my heart of hearts as many before me have and many after me will. And most of those that were here testifying also, the great majority of them that opposed Bill 291, also believed that that choice, that decision, that very critical, not necessarily pro-abortion, but critical pro-choice life, pro-choice question, should be brought before the electorate. And I just wanted to express my concerns, Madam Speaker, because I just, I have been approached by many people outside of these halls and it always goes down to that. It's like, what kind of a culture are we creating? Whose right is it to ask me why I'm having a baby, how many babies I should have, when am I gonna have a baby, how come I haven't had a baby? That, those are fundamentally private questions. And I think when it comes to issues of of procreation, of medical decisions, how we deal with that really, I think, is beyond 15 senators, in my most sincere and humble opinion. And that is why I cannot support 291. It really has to be brought before the people. Because it affects, it affects us generally, and it's something that's just too broad for me to want to take that on. Regardless of whether I was elected to this position or not, I just believe if we could take initiatives like marijuana and gambling, why can't we take this issue to the people as it was contemplated by the two sponsors, Ariola and Nelson, initially when they passed the public law banning abortion on Guam? Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Maasi, Senator. On the bill number 291, we have granted the privilege for the loft, and I'm asking that all cellphones be put on silent and that please, please respect the decorum that we are trying to maintain in here. That means only those who are recognized are allowed to speak. Thank you. Right now, we're on the bill number 291. Is there any senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I have three amendments. My colleagues could take a look at it. This is B291JSSA, line 3, page 5. Something I spoke about during the campaign, that this bill lacks the protection against victims of rape or incest. And that's what I put on the amendment.
Senator, sorry. Are you speaking on an amendment?
Yes.
Which one?
On the first one. That's line 3, page 5.
All right, thank you. Please proceed. This copy should have been passed out to each senator.
If my colleagues all can take a look at it. I added that at letter C and letter D, "if a physician does not violate the provision of this act if the pregnancy was determined to be caused by an act of rape or other criminal sexual conduct." Then the second line would be, "if a physician does not violate the provision of this act if the pregnancy was determined to be caused by an act of incest." Those are the two most two of the most crimes that should not be tolerated. But I ask for my colleagues' support so that this be part of the bill.
On the amendment to line 3, page 5. Is there any senator who would like to speak on the amendment? We're gonna take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. On the amendment to line 3, page 5, the JSSA amendment, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the amendment? On the amendment? On the amendment?
You gonna recognize me?
On the amendment?
I'm standing up to make a motion, Madam Speaker.
You have a point of order. Can we dispense with the amendment then?
I think this is, I think it would be prudent of us to have the senators that are on island present. And so I'd like to make a motion for a call of the House.
A motion for the call of the... We do have a quorum. There's a motion for the call of the House. On that motion, all in favor of a call of the House, please raise your hand. Pardon? There's an objection. All in favor of a motion for a call of the House. There's no vote put to us at this point except on the amendment. A call of the House is, there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Motion fails. Senator Sinagastin, is there any, one more time, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? And if not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment. He waves closing on the amendment. Is there any objection to the amendment? There's been an objection. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. All in favor of the amendment? Raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Sinagastin, you still recognized on the bill.
Thank you. I have another amendment. We don't want to protect the rapes or the incest, but this is on line 5, begins on page 7 and ends on page 11. To delete section 91B108 to 91B111. The second best thing, right to a lottery, sue somebody. I'm not in support of anything like that. Thank you.
On the floor amendment, is there any senator who would like to be recognized on the floor amendment? On the floor amendment? If not, then Senator Sinagastin, you may close on the amendment. He's waving closing on the amendment. So is there an objection to this amendment? There's an objection. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator Sinagastin, you still have the floor.
I have another amendment to add a new section 91B119 to the bill. Very specific, my colleagues. It's about adding an education program to this. The Guam Department of Education, the Guam Charter School Council, implemented a sexual abuse prevention program recognized by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to provide schoolchildren and families with tools, program, training, tools to understand and prevention of incest, rape, and other sexual assaults such as, but not limited to, the Good Touch, Bad Touch, Circles of Training, Sexual Abuse of Children with Disabilities, or Talk to Your Child or Teen. And I ask that the lead counsel and the clerk make their technical correction as needed.
On this amendment, is there any senator who would like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then Senator Sinagastin, you may close on the amendment. He's waving closing. Is there any objection to the amendment? Hearing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Sinagastin, you still have the floor. On the bill. Is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill? Senator Rigel, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in objection to the bill for numerous reasons. First of which is I do support a woman's right to choose. Secondly, and perhaps more importantly is even setting that whole debate aside, the debate of whether or not something should be legal or illegal, whether or not abortion should be legal or illegal, this bill doesn't address that. In fact, this bill was based off, is based off of a Texas law that was designed to circumvent the decision of Roe versus Wade. The whole purpose of that Texas law was to find a way around Roe versus Wade. Because as we all know, Roe versus Wade essentially said abortions are legal. It prevented states from making it illegal. So because of that, a state looked for a way around it. And the way they came up with was this civil litigation idea. Basically, they said, since we can't make it illegal, let's make it costly. Let's make it litigious. Let's make this a matter of civil liability as opposed to criminal liability. But now we know that Roe versus Wade has been overturned. So states now again have the right and the option to decide whether they want it to be legal or illegal. So I don't see any reason for this bill just based off that alone. Whether or not you believe it should be legal or illegal, this bill doesn't address that. This bill was designed again as a workaround Roe versus Wade. There's no need for that workaround anymore. Even if Roe versus Wade was not overturned, I still would not be in support of the bill. Also because I'm not in support of increased civil litigation. I'm not in support of the fact that this bill essentially allows people to sue people for money for something they disagree with. I don't even think the bill contains in it any specific I don't even think the bill contains in it any specifics in terms of, you know, how do you prove that you've been harmed by that person's decision in order to sue that person for their decision? So how far do we take this down its logical course? I mean, can I sue someone for doing something I don't like? Can I sue my neighbor for some other decision that he or she may have made because I disagree with it and I think it's a wrong decision? This country, the U.S. that is, is already known for being extremely litigious. Americans are known for suing everyone for almost anything under the sun, and we're just adding another potential thing for people to sue for. I mean, do we want parents suing their child for having an abortion for money? Do we want to set brother against sister for money for $10,000? I'm sure there's going to be some people who will attempt to sue just so they can get the money. Maybe they don't even really believe in the cause. They're just looking for some cash. And perhaps they think this is a way they could make some money off of this. In addition to that, unfortunately, we attempted to amend the bill to, in the least, in the very least, exclude acts of incest, exclude rape or criminal sexual conduct. Unfortunately, that amendment failed. So now as it stands, the bill would allow someone to sue someone for an abortion even if that person was raped or even if that pregnancy was caused by incest. So again, for the record, I am for a woman's right to choose. In addition to that, for the record, I am against this bill, not only because it doesn't afford that right to choose, but it takes us down a completely different direction, which I think is the wrong direction, which is a direction that doesn't settle the matter either, but rather allows for this workaround that makes it a civil case, down a direction that makes it centered more on money rather than principle. I would prefer that we all voted on the principle of the matter. I would prefer that we actually voted on whether or not abortion should be legal or illegal. I understand that currently there's a law on the books that was previously passed making it illegal, but there was an injunction through the court, so I prefer it goes through that whole process, figure that out. There's also something in that original law, I'm not an expert on, that I believe had some calling for a voter referendum. Let it take that course, whatever that current law is that the injunction was set against. Let that take its course. Let that decide the fate of the future. Let us make the decision on whether or not abortion should be legal or illegal and whether or not we should have the right to sue someone for something we disagree with. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill? On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill. The sponsor is waving closing on the bill. So the motion is for the bill as amended?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion that we move bill number 291-36LS into the third reading voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. All in favor, please raise your hand. If, okay, I can't discern if you, you're calling for roll call. I hear one and I hear two. Please raise your hand. Thank you. There's three calls for roll call. Clerk, please take roll call. The vote is on whether to place bill number 291-36LS as amended on the floor to the third reading file. Roll call. Senator Adah. Senator Adah, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Moilen. Senator Moilen, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes.
Motion to excuse members not present.
On the motion to excuse members not present, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, excused. Senator Nelson. Senator Nelson, aye. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, nay. Senator Rigel. Senator Rigel, nay. Senator Sinagastin. Senator Sinagastin, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Tidaway. Senator Tidaway, aye. Senator Terlahi. Senator Terlahi, aye. Speaker Terlahi. Speaker Terlahi, nay. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, nay.
The motion to place bill number 291-36 as amended on the floor to the third reading file passes with nine votes. Motion, motion carries. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized. By the way, colleagues, we've exhausted our second reading file currently. Majority Leader, you, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion, now we're standing house rules, to go back to motion.
On the motion to go back to motions, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're back at motions. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move bill number 2542-36COR, which is an act to add a new chapter to Division Two of Title 17 Guam Code annotated relative to defining the educational and professional requirements for certified school counselors and to authorize the compiler of laws to make changes into the second reading file.
All right, I believe this motion was made earlier?
That's correct, but it didn't pass.
All right, and it failed. And so now are, we reconsidering that motion to place it on the agenda?
I'm just making a new motion to place it on the agenda, but if you'd like to reconsider it, then that's fine as well.
All right, is there any objection to reconsidering the motion to place on the objection, I mean, on the agenda? There's an objection. All in favor placing bill, allowing reconsideration of bill number 254-36? Is there any objection? I mean, sorry. All in favor, please raise your hand. A motion for reconsideration passes. Majority Leader, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you.
Sorry, just, just a lot of movement going on in here. Okay, please, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a motion to add bill number, for the reconsideration is bill number 254-36COR, which is an act to add a new chapter to Division Two of Title 17 Guam Code annotated relative to defining the educational and professional requirements for certified school counselors and to authorize the compiler of laws to make changes. And I know, Madam Speaker, that one of the co-sponsors, a good colleague of mine, tried to move this bill earlier in the session agenda, and there was an objection on the premise that for some reason, the acting superintendent was trying to get a hold of me and made numerous attempts. That's absolutely false. When, when that was brought to our attention, hearing those remarks on session floor, we scoured our emails, and the acting superintendent does have my number, and I have not received any communications from, from him in regarding this matter.
Point of information, Madam Chair. Point of information, Senator Tidaway, you are recognized.
And I bring this because it was myself that brought this up. I received a text here, and I'll be happy to share it, on the consideration of this bill to be set aside only because the acting superintendent is trying to get a hold of the author of this legislation and that, most especially, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Speaker, the roundtable that was held is not in the committee report, and that information has a lot of comments that were made by the superintendent as well as those who were there that this body needs to listen to. So the, the committee report is not in complete form because it is missing this information, which a roundtable was held, I believe, in October or May. So that, that was why for my objection, and I object for the bill to move forward because of this.
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker. Just a point of information, Madam Speaker.
A further point of information, Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Thank you. I'm not challenging whether or not the, the good senator received an email from the acting or a text message from the acting superintendent. I am saying that for myself, he has not contacted me. Secondly, absolutely right, but the committee report is complete. The committee report, it has the public hearing results, and as a caveat, I would, I do have the transcriptions for the roundtable that we did email to the Committee on Rules for, to be added to the committee report. And so that was something that I would have, if we can move this bill forward, I would like to make a motion to append the committee report to include the transcriptions of the roundtable hearing.
Those are points of information. On the motion to place bill number 254-36COR on the agenda, is there any objection?
Madam, I, I object. As you know, we want the full committee report before we move any bill onto the session for, that the committee report is on.
Objection, it's noted.
Thank you.
On the motion to place it on the agenda, there's been an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
So just, Madam Speaker, I move to add the appointment of Gina Ramos to serve as a member of the Guam Community College Board of Trustees to the session agenda. This has just been cleared by the Committee on Rules today.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I withdraw at this time.
All right, thank you. That motion's withdrawn. We're still on motion. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill number 361-36COR as introduced, sponsored by myself. It's an act to add a new Article Eight to Chapter One, Title Twenty-Two Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to adopting new source review rule for new and modified major sources in sulfur dioxide nonattainment areas transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency.
All right, on that motion, is there any objection to placing bill number 361 on, on the session agenda? Any objection? There's been a request to reread the title, Senator Perez.
Yes, it's an act to add a new Article Eight, Chapter One, Title Twenty-Two Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to adopting new source review rule for new and modified major sources in sulfur dioxide nonattainment areas transmitted by the Guam Environmental Protection Agency.
On the motion to place the bill on the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized on motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill number 360 as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, sponsored by myself. It's an act to add new sections 51, 111A8, A9, and A10 to Article One, Chapter Fifty-One, Division Two, Title Ten, Guam Code annotated relative to protecting our air, water, land, and the health of our people from the toxic exposure due to open burning and open detonation of hazardous waste and prohibiting the importation of hazardous waste into Guam.
On that motion to place bill number 360-36COR onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized under motion.
Yes, there is just one more on behalf of the Vice Speaker. It's, it's bill number 354-36COR, sponsored by Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, is an act to add a new section 80129 to Chapter Eighty, Title Five, Guam Code annotated relative to the acquisition of library books, ebooks, audiobooks, digital publications, newsletters, software, and any, any other publications deemed necessary by the Guam Public Library System as introduced.
On that motion to place number, I mean, bill number 354-36 onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move, I motion to place bill 342-36LS introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Mary Camacho Torres, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Tony Adah, Senator Jose Pito Terlaiz, Senator Frank Blas, as amended by the Committee on Air, Tramptation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizen, an act to amend section 1203F and 1203.1 of Article Two, Title Twelve, the Guam Code annotated relative to the Antonio B. Juan Pet International Airport Authority Guam, Guam contracts for the use of airport facilities and properties onto the session agenda.
On the motion to place bill number 342-36 as amended by the committee onto the agenda, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor of placing bill 342 on the agenda, please raise your hand. All right, just, there's been a request for moments pause to read the bill title once more, so we're taking, just a moment, just a moment. You okay? Okay, senators. There's been an objection on the motion to place Bill Number 342-36 LS as amended by the committee onto the agenda. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Senator San Augustin, you are recognized on motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 359-36, which is introduced by myself, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation Appropriation and Housing, an act to authorize the extension of the program Azuda Para Itaualta Energy Credit Program for another five months and to authorize the Marga Hagan Guam to spend up to $26,381,000 from the general fund and/or fiscal year FY 2022, general fund revenues collected in excess of adopted levels for the program Azuda Para Itaualta Energy Credit Program, onto the session agenda.
On the motion to place Bill 359 as amended by the committee onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator San Augustin, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I have one more bill. I just got to get the title, and it's on Bill 357, ma'am.
Senator San Augustin, you are recognized on motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Motion to place Bill Number 357-36, which is as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing, introduced by yourself, Madam Speaker, an act to appropriate $26,381,000 from the fiscal year 2022, general fund revenues collected in excess of the adopted level enumerated in public law 3654, as amended to the Guam Power Authority for a five-month extension to the program Azuda Para Itaualta Energy Credit Program, relative to providing customer for another $500 credit toward their account. Thank you. Onto the session agenda, ma'am.
On that motion to place Bill 357-36COR as amended onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion passes. We're still on motions. Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Resolution Number 464-36 LS, relative to requesting that the Honorable Deb Hallin, Secretary of Interior, honor the Department of Interior's responsibilities to Guam by directing the Offices of Insular Affairs and Environmental Policy and Compliance to review and assess the potential environmental impacts of the U.S. Marine Corps Base Camp Blas Live Fire Training Range Complex at Northwest Field and the Hand Grenade Range at Anderson South on the northern Guam Lends Aquifer and provide guidance to the Department of the Navy prior to range operations that ensure the protection of Guam's water resources and calling on the Committee on Armed Services of the U.S. Senate and House of Representatives to pause construction activities related to the training ranges and withhold all current and future funding of the same until environmental impacts concerning the impending threat of contamination of the northern Guam Lends Aquifer and future threat of diminished freshwater resources in Guam are reassessed onto the session agenda.
On that motion to place Resolution Number 464-36 onto the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Is there any other motion? Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding House rules, I move to place Bill Number 332-36 LS as introduced by myself, Senator Duane, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Anthony Adah, which is an act to add a new Article Thirteen to Chapter Seventy-Seven, Title Twelve, Guam Code Annotated, relative to a public-private partnership for the rehabilitation and improvements of the football fields operated by the Guam National Youth Football Federation, placed on session agenda, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to place Bill 332-36 LS as amended onto the agenda, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're still on motions. Is there any other motion? If not, then we're going to take a five-minute recess and to allow the clerks to make sure all the bills as amended or as motioned onto the agenda are placed onto our drives, and for senators to review the files. So, we will resume in about five minutes, five-minute recess.
We're back from recess. The bills either have been passed out and the remainder are being passed out as put on the agenda under motions. So there being no other motions, we are now proceeding to the second reading file, beginning with bill number 254-36COR. Senator Nelson, you are recognized.
Point of information, Madam Speaker. We still do not have it-
Please state your point of- Senator Titigl, please state your point of information.
I apologize. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's still the- the committee report is not complete. We still do not have the roundtable that happened on this bill regarding this bill on the legislative website. We don't see it. It's nowhere here.
This is part of the committee report and it's not online.
Thank you. Senator Nelson, you are recognized. Bill number 254-36COR.
Then I object to move forward until we get the committee report.
Okay, but I don't think that's a motion, Madam Speaker.
Senator Nelson, you have the floor.
Thank you.
Bill 254.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We did send the additional transcripts of the roundtable to Committee on Rules, from my understanding. And so maybe I can make that motion right now, notwithstanding the House rules, that we go ahead and append the committee report to have the roundtable transcripts included in it. And we did also do something of the like earlier in this session where we appended the committee report to include extra documents for another bill that there was no objection for.
Is that a motion, Senator?
That is a motion.
There's a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to append the documents sent to the Committee on Rules to the committee report.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please state your point of information, Senator Titigl.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't even have a copy of it. How can we append something we don't even have a copy of?
Can the clerk please load it into the Google Drive, Madam Speaker, to include that?
We're confirming whether the clerks has received it from the Committee on Rules and with instructions to append it or not. Otherwise, they will upload it?
Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion-
Do you have a point of order or a point of information?
I'd like to make a motion to set this bill aside until we get that.
You're not recognized right now, Senator, unless you have a point of order or a point of information. We are on a motion right now. We're waiting for the upload from the clerks.
Well, the point of order is that we- this body has agreed not to move forward until all committee reports are posted online, not just for us, but for the public to review as well.
Madam Speaker, in accordance, point of information.
This is not a debate. We're on a motion. There's a point of order. We are waiting to see if the clerks are uploading, if they have received any instruction from the Committee on Rules as to the documents. from the sponsor of a letter to the Committee on Rules asking that the document be appended to the committee report. It is being uploaded. It is over 100 pages long. It is being uploaded, so it's currently being uploaded. There were no instructions from the Committee on Rules, but she is uploading it. And so there is a motion on the floor, and that is to append the- Senator Nelson, can you repeat the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
For the document, yeah.
Just a notwithstanding motion, because we don't normally do this, to append the committee report to include the roundtable hearing transcriptions.
All right. On that motion, there's been an objection. Is there any objection to append the roundtable transcript?
The committee report to include the roundtable transcripts.
Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Nelson on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to, notwithstanding- notwithstanding House rules to move bill number 254-36 as substituted on the floor in the third reading and to discuss.
All right. First, a motion to accept the substitute bill. So there's a motion to accept substitute bill number 254-36COR as substituted on the floor. All members were given copies during the recess, so you have copies of the substitute version. On that motion to accept the substitute version, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're now on the motion to place the substitute bill on to- on the third reading. You may discuss that motion, Senator Nelson.
I may discuss or I make the motion? I'll make the motion, just to be clear. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place bill number 254-36COR as substituted, which is an add to add a new Chapter Two, Division Two of Title 17 Guam Code Annotated relative to defining the educational and professional requirements for certified school counselors and to authorize the compiler of laws to make changes into the third reading and to discuss.
Please proceed on the discussion. This is a motion to place it on third. We are going to debate- she's going to discuss, and then any other senators, welcome to There was no objection to the motion to substitute the bill. We're now on the motion to place it on third reading, so she is discussing the motion.
Thank you.
You are allowed to discuss the motion. Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, bill number 25-36COR is an answer to the counselor's call for assistance in the Guam Legislature. What initiated this type of measure was that there was a new SOP that was developed by the Guam Department of Education requiring counselors to perform their job outside of the scope of what they were trained to do and what they received their certification for. For example, in the SOP, there are different levels to address suicide. And so it is that in the SOP, it gives the counselor the duty and responsibility that if a student should come to them, you know, with saying that they have thoughts of suicide, that it is the counselor's duty to meet them several times before they refer them forward to any advanced behavioral health care. And so the challenge with this, Madam Speaker, which is one of the biggest concerns of this SOP was that when a student comes to you, when a child comes to you, that they have thoughts of suicide or that they want to commit suicide, they need the treatment right away. They need the advanced psychological treatment right away. It is not within the counselor's scope, expertise, nor certification requirements where they have to- where they meet the student several times to ensure or to gauge them at a level of whether they're at high risk of suicide or low risk of suicide. The bottom line is that the student has already said that they have contemplated suicide or they have thoughts of suicide, and that was a big challenge to them because they're not trained to address that area. Another instance was that the SOP contradicted itself, and so it was also very confusing for parents or stakeholders to understand certain waivers that they were giving up. And with further discussion with the former superintendent, there was a grievance that the counselors filed against Guam Department of Education because of the proposed SOP. The counselors was then given reassurance by GDOE that they would address those grievances and update the SOP. However, that grievance- so in an instance, the counselors withdrew the grievance trusting GDOE leadership on their word. However, that did not happen. The grievances and the causes that they stated for grievance, that was in great conflict with their job duties, their expertise, their capabilities, was not fixed. And so that's why we're here today to address. Now, I want to make it also very clear, Madam Speaker, that we are not the only jurisdiction addressing this challenge for school counselors. In the state of Washington, they're also requiring their education departments to abide by the National Association of School Counselors' requirements and rules. And so this is happening nationwide, and also it's an attribute to the challenges, the behavioral health challenges that we have seen during the pandemic. A lot of the students are really struggling adjusting, going back to school, and just within the home front, and they're seeing an uptick, a rise in the need for behavioral health care. And in many cases, counselors, especially in the moment of suicide, counselors are not certified or do not have that kind of expertise and do not have that type of training to address the needs of the students, where thereby they should be referred to behavioral health. However, the SOP does not allow them to do that. SOP states you have to meet with them several times before you refer them, and that is a great risk, not only to the child, but also to the counselor and to the community as a whole. And so the substituted version addresses several- addresses several concerns that were brought up in the public hearing and the roundtable hearing. In page one, where we address the Section One on Definitions, Comprehensive School Counselor Programs, we changed it to mean shall mean the development of an integrated system of appropriate school counseling activities and services that are based on data-informed decision-making, delivered to all students systematically, include a developmentally appropriate curriculum focused on the mindset and behavior all students need for post-secondary readiness and success, and close achievement and opportunity gaps and result in improved student achievement, attendance, and discipline. And then in lines 14 through 22, onto the next page, where you see that there's elementary, middle, and high school definitions, we removed those definitions. And instead of saying elementary school counselor shall mean, middle school counselor shall mean, high school counselor shall mean, we basically gave it one definition, where it says school counselor shall mean the educators uniquely trained in child and adolescent development, learning strategies, self-management, and social skills who understand and promote success for today's diverse students. They implement a school counseling program to support students through this important developmental period. The program provides education prevention and intervention activities which are integrated into all aspects of students' lives. The program teaches students the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary for academic career and social, emotional development, which serves as foundation for future success. There was also concern on the qualifications, discussing with the Guam certification, Guam Education Certification Office. And when it comes to certifying counselors and teachers, there are very similar requirements. And so we removed the basic requirements that we added, and we chose to keep the- And so we removed the basic requirements that we added, and we chose to keep the, we chose to add pursuant to subsection 8112 of Chapter 8 of Title V Alpha of the Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, the Guam Certification for Educators Commission states the minimum requirements for certified school counselors. And so we included that provision to ensure that their certification remains the same. And then, Madam Speaker, we removed the additional duties, the appropriate and inappropriate duties for school counselors, because we know that there was also an issue. We added the school year pay schedule for school counselors, where persons employed as school counselors shall, at their option, be paid on either 21 or 26 bi-weekly payments. And this is general across the board when we do this for teachers. So either teachers get paid only during the school year, and then they opt out in the months of summer, or they can get paid through the summer during that school year, through that calendar year. And we also removed on page nine, the school counselor services, because that was a concern as well. Elementary school counselor services, because it separated it from a lot of the, a lot of the flexibilities that administrators had, and as well as the high school counselor services. We removed that as well in page 12, and the middle school counselor services, because that was a concern from the administrators. Okay. And colleagues, I hope you can support this measure. You know, we had several roundtable hearings to address the concerns and really give the Guam Department of Education an opportunity to address the concerns that the counselors had in regards to their SOP. However, through many discussions and many roundtable hearings, I believe there was three that we had, there was no traction from the leadership of education. And then they're saying, "Oh, well, school started." Well, absolutely. That's why we need to move now, because school started. We need to address these issues now, because the SOP doesn't even give the counselors the resources that they need, or doesn't acknowledge that they lack the expertise to meet the requirements of the SOP. And so our school counselors are in school right now, having to deal, having to align by an SOP that they're not even trained to do, in the sense of suicide. And then they say, "Well, the acting superintendent just came in." That's fine. But in organizational leadership, the acting superintendent, or the person at the top, does have continuity with their deputies, and the deputies address this issue as you go along. Just because someone at the top gets replaced does not mean that the whole organization stops moving. It's organizational leadership 101. I think, Madam Speaker, what it is, is that this is more of a political move. This is an instance where GDOE always says, "Stay out of Guam Department of Education. Leave us alone. Let us operate." Well, let me tell you what happens when we leave them alone and let them operate. Simon Sanchez is not built yet. They told us to leave them alone and let them operate. Our schools are in disarray. Now we have to move students into other schools. They told us to leave them alone and let them operate. And those are systemic problems. That's been going on for five-plus, 10 years. And then now, we had the roundtable hearing. The acting superintendent says, "Give me more time." And I told him, I said, "You still have deputies that have addressed this issue. You still have deputies to operate for you. Just because you're new, that doesn't mean the work stops or slows down." And then even the board. How do we rate a superintendent, five stars, when the board, our schools are in disarray? Where's the board action there? And they come here every fiscal year, every budget hearing, saying, "Give us more money." We give you everything you need. We give you all the resources you need. You make deals behind closed doors to accept the appropriation, when I, as the oversight chair, am saying, "No, you need to start advocating for more money. I cannot do it alone. We had them here in the committee of the whole during budget. This suffices for us." Then what, four months later? Oh, GDOE does not have enough money. It's politics. And these, the people at the top are the best at playing it. Let's take to Twitter. Let's frame a message. But where is the product? Where are the tangible items? The only thing I can see that is tangible is, one, they're not, they're not acting in the best interest of the students by addressing this counselor's, by addressing the counselor's concern. They're not acting in the best interest in maintaining the schools. Otherwise, we would have heard that Ocean View was in disarray four or five years ago. Otherwise, Simon Sanchez would have had a groundbreaking already. Otherwise, FBLG, we would have known that the structure was in compromise. Stop playing politics. This is what they need to do. The counselors are asking for this because they know their job, not district psychologists far away that are not even boots-on-ground in the school. District psychologists are making SOPs requiring them to do these things. Counselors, they have nothing to do and understand the job duty of a counselor. They're completely different practices. We have taken our time on this bill. We have been, we have listened to all people with concern on this bill, and we have worked to try to make this bill better, so that we ensure that our students are taken care of. And we ensure that they're taken care of by people who are trained, because the SOP does not do the students any justice. The SPAM does not do the students any justice. It cuts the counselors at their knees, and they can't move forward. And then guess what? Guess whose fault it is when these issues arise with the students? It's not the people that implemented the SPAM. It's the counselor's fault. And that is an injustice to them. We have entertained this measure. We have addressed this measure for a good part of the year. So colleagues, I humbly ask for your support.
On the motion to place Bill 254-36COR as substituted on the floor, onto the third reading, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? On the motion, Senator Titigui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the substituted committee report's about 197 pages long. It doesn't really give enough time for this body to really look at what has to be said with regard to the concerns of this legislation. I understand they've been working on this for quite some time. The former superintendent had left before he could resolve it. But the acting superintendent, in good faith, showed up at the roundtable to ask for a little bit more time. They're right in the middle of opening school, Madam Speaker, right in the middle of opening So I just, this is opening Pandora's Box, my colleagues. It's very simple. Here we are, doing what HR is supposed to do, what the board is supposed to put together. I mean, even DOA has a responsibility of saying what positions there are, the title, the positions, and what the requirements are. Here, we're just stepping in and making that decision. Talk about politics. There is an avenue to do this. This is politics, taking something like this to open Pandora's Box, because next thing you know, we're going to have people like who are school aides coming down to this legislature and telling us, "Oh, this is what we're supposed to do. We don't want to do this, and we need more training this. We need more funding here. We want to get paid on a certain time." That's not this body's responsibility. They have people who are well-equipped, well-educated on how to put those things forward, not this Madam Speaker, those who came to testify during the three hours that I attended in March, I believe it was in March, there were so, it was like 50/50. Some, of course, these counselors that were coming to testify in favor, majority of them were actually counselors from private schools versus the counselors at DOA, I mean, DOE. And I didn't realize there was such a difference. There, if I'm not mistaken, about 89 counselors in DOE. In the private sector, it's only about like 20-something, if I'm not mistaken. So when you have principals coming forward, talking about to assist counselors on the jobs and responsibilities that they're doing, they want to work together with these counselors. In fact, Madam Speaker, if I'm not mistaken, that they are addressing this issue through a collective bargaining agreement and meeting with HR to create a position. Now, that's the process it's supposed to happen. That's the way you're supposed to do this change, not at this body and playing politics by doing it for someone. But this is not the place to do it. We're opening this Pandora's Box. Next thing you know, one of us is going to have, has a friend or somebody who's in a different position at DOE and then going to come over here and ask us to change their title description. But don't get me wrong, Madam Speaker, I believe that the counselors have an issue. They have a grievance, and it should be heard. In fact, it is being heard. You know, without, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make a motion, right, to recess until tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., so that we have a chance to read this roundtable that we just got 10 minutes ago. It's 197 pages long. So I like to recess, so everybody has that opportunity.
There's a motion to recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Is there any objection? There's an objection, all in favor of recessing until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Please raise your hand. Motion carries. We're recessed until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow.